If people could take their seats, I'm going to call this evening's meeting of the Board of Selectment to order. If you please. Thank you. Couple of housekeeping things. Restrooms are down this lobby on the left-hand side and they are gender neutral, so anyone may use them, so but so that you know where the restrooms are. We are taping this, however, it's not live Zoom tonight, but you can go home afterwards and watch the rebroadcast of yourself. So there you go. But we are going to ask people that when they wish to speak or they've been called upon, we're going to have our presenters come up here to do their presentations and use the mics. But we'll have someone with a roving mic when someone from the audience wishes to ask a question or to speak on a topic. We would ask that you identify yourself by name and where you live. And we'll take it from there. So we're going to begin by opening up with a public hearing. And I'm going to ask Bob Brown to do a quick presentation on what this is all about. There you go. Thank you, Lynn.
Commission, and I guess we have power. I'll be very brief, but what we'd like to talk about tonight is funding for the Philbert, Chrisany Bog Walkway. Many of you may know that last winter, we started to think very seriously about planning and building a much more safe and secure walkway rather than the two, two by eight boards, which are kind of the basic walkway. There are issues with the amount of traffic that we have in there. Unfortunately, we had some people fall. And some parts of it are really not good, other parts are not too bad. I think we can fix them up, but in rough numbers, in a perfect world, it would be nice if we could upgrade about half of the walkway, which is nearly a half a mile. So this is a very serious project. We worked with a supplier in Vermont last fall, very reliable, delivered on time. And we asked him to build the first 350 feet, which is the portion from Newport Road into what we call Grand Junction. It was a very lumpy, wet stump, stones, grass, very difficult to walk. And what we built was a three-foot wide aluminum frame walkway, basically 12-foot sections. They're on two posts. It's very, very similar to a boat dock, only it's three feet wide. And it has a non-slip fiberglass decking. It's perforated, so the rain and so forth runs right through it. And I'm happy to say that that first 350 feet is complete and is available to anyone who'd like to take a short walk in there to the point that we call Grand Junction where the trails split. We have a next phase planned. It goes without saying that to do a project like this, it's very, very expensive. There's just no way around it. Price of aluminum products in the last 24 months have gone up six times. And, you know, we thought seriously, like, let's wait till the prices come down. And I think most would agree that that's that's really wishful thinking. So we're moving forward guardedly, trying to do it right. And the other point I'd like to make is when we first started with this and we made a request to the Mary Haddad Fund, we said we would do our very best to work this project without going to the taxpayers at town meeting and asking for taxpayer money. In other words, we would attempt to fund this with donations from various people, charitable trusts and so forth. We've never done that before. We're learning and we've had some success and that is what this meeting is about tonight. We have had a foundation in the Upper Valley, which really wants to remain anonymous. But they have gifted New London before. I'm not sure exactly about two years ago, I believe it was the Rec Commission. They're a family. I mean, there's nothing wrong with this organization. It's not a special interest group. And we wrote, told them what we were doing, what our needs were. And they sent us a check, I'm going to say within a week to 10 days for $20,000 with the agreement that their name would not be publicized. And it's my understanding that New Hampshire law, 10,000 or more requires a public hearing. I believe.
Yes, that's why we're here.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so here we are. And we are, we are really excited about this. It's a very, very generous donation. We would like to put this to work this fall. Place another order. We're already working on the design of the next phase. And make sure the supply chain is in order and and move forward.
Thank you, Bob. So I would just like to open it up if anyone in the audience has any questions relative to this. Yes, I see. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just curious, the $20,000 donation, is that sufficient to complete the work? Or is that just a part? And if it is a part, is that a small part or a big part?
Very good question. We have not, the entire bog does not have to be equipped with walkways. We have some plans to make the wooden walkways in an area that's level. We can make them better, but we can't fix all the up and down and the valleys and peaks and so forth. So to answer your question, we don't know where pricing is going. We'd like to think it's going down, but we could easily spend $200,000 to $300,000. So this is not a, this is not an insignificant project, but it's also our most used trail system. And if you drive by Newport Road, I mean, it's rare that you don't see multiple cars there. And there's all kinds of wonderful flowers and other things in there that people come from all over. I always enjoy seeing little kids in there walking around without their handheld device. It's really encouraging. But it gets used. So we're plugging away. I mean, we're going to do some other notices. Any donation is certainly welcome. I realize there's not a lot of $20,000 donations out there, but if somebody and people have asked if they could make a donation, which I'm assuming might be $25, $50. Nothing wrong with that. We'd, we'd, we'd love it.
Thank you, Bob. Just a reminder again, and if you would say your name when you ask a question or speak so, and your name is?
It's Robert Lyon.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other, John?
Anyone wanting to gift money?
John?
Anybody wanting to gift money then, as long as that amount is under 9,900, we would not need a public hearing?
Yes, 10,000 and over, we have a public hearing, which is not a problem. If you want to give, anybody wants to give 10,000, public hearing is not a problem. We're happy to do it.
Right.
This is the public hearing, so it's pretty painless.
Right, but if one didn't want, wanted to avoid that, you could give 9,099 and okay.
Okay. Janet?
Bob, so the first phase is paid for and was paid for with Haddad funds. Is that correct?
The first 350 feet that's complete, yes, was done with Mary Haddad money. And a small, the rope railing was done with, with a gift from one of the two banks. So it's paid for.
Good. That's good.
Okay, no other comments, then I will officially close the public hearing. Thank you, Bob, for your presentation. And I would entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the gift of $20,000 to be used for the Philbert, Chrisany Bog Walkway.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the motion passes and we accept the gift of $20,000. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Nice job. Next up, we have Russ Moore. Russ, I understand that your presentation, thank you for putting it on a flash drive, so we'll have it up here. But we, I know there are many, many slides that you have, but you might want to just sort of condense some of that in the interest of we have a long meeting tonight.
Yes. Yes, thank you. But I want to thank Kim for assisting me with the preparing the the presentation tonight. And my name's Russ Moore. I'm the chairperson of the New London Bike Walk Coalition. And I'm pleased to be with you, you know, here tonight to talk a little bit about some of the biking and walking needs in our community and how we might address them. And our coalition is really an informal group of volunteers. They came together to look at how could we improve safety and access to pedestrians and bicyclists in the community. And we've kind of evolved into a larger group of people who sort of focus on specific initiatives. So one of our initiatives was the sheer of the road signs that you may see around town. There's 11 signs and that those were actually installed with the cooperation of the Department of Public Works and the Police Department. So that was extremely helpful and alerting motorists that there are other types of transportation on the road and to be, and to be cautious in our town. We also did a community bike and walk survey in 2021. We received over 350 responses. And if you could bring up the, the survey, please. And the overwhelming response was to, to increase access and safety for walkers and biking bikers in town. The there was another survey done at the same time, the Community Health Survey by New London Hospital and the top ranked service of all kinds of different possible services, social services, et cetera, was more access to walking and biking in our community. And that was a much larger survey. So in terms of obstacles to walking and biking in our community, and I know many of you are familiar with those, but the identified obstacles were 63% responded, there's a lack of adequate road signage to slow traffic and direct pedestrians. 34% said motorist speed and the number of cars was a major issue. And 33% said, you know, just, just scheduling it. In terms of biking, there were very similar responses in terms of motorist speed, narrow shoulders and windy roads. So that's the background in terms of what can we do to encourage biking and walking both for recreational purposes? And obviously it's, has a positive impact on the environment. And, you know, what kind of steps can we take? So our group engaged in discussions with many individuals and organizations. And obviously addressing some of the major infrastructure challenges in our community will be costly and will take time. But are there other things that we could do in the short term? Just to accommodate walkers and bikers. So one of the things that we focused on was the idea of more bike parking and bike storage in our community. Because people do use bicycles for recreation, but also to run errands and to access the small businesses on Main Street. So as I think many of you know, post-COVID, the people are out and about and we have many new residents of our community and there is more traffic and there's more and, and we have individuals who are not following the speed limit signs. So we need to be serious about encouraging and embracing other modes of transportation, particularly downtown. And that includes it trying to envision a network of trails and, and bike lanes. You know, tying in the Conservation Commission trails and, and walking paths and bike lanes so that people of all ages and abilities can access our, our great town. So that's the background and I am trying to keep this very succinct. So one of the things that we've been working on is bike rack placement in town and I've been in close communication with Bob Harrington from Department of Public Works. In fact, I surveyed several sites with him. And I've also been in contact with with the Police Department and we have the support of many businesses in town and organizations, including New London Hospital, Colby Sawyer College, the Police Benevolence Association, the Bunker Road Coalition for Safety. And I've also been in communication with the Recreation Commission. And they are supportive of the, of the proposal to have, to increase the number of bike racks and to enhance and improve them. So if you're not a cyclist, you may think that the few bike racks we have are adequate and no, no more investment is needed. But if you do use a bicycle, you know that the traditional bike rack is called the rim bender because it doesn't really support the frame of the bike. So that's why we need to sort of think about a redesign of those. They don't allow you to securely lock your bike. They don't adequately support the bike. And you end up with kind of a yard sale of bikes in different configurations on the bike rack. So some of the, the designs that we are considering are sort of a flagship bike rack that would be in the downtown area. And this is an example of that, which we had on loan from the Concord Sunapee Trail Association last summer for a couple of weeks right by the municipal parking lot. A bike rack of this design, the covered bike rack provides provides protection from the weather, a secure storage, high visibility from the road. And those kind of racks are in the range of $8,000 to $12,000, depending on the model and the number of racks you get. So our organization and some of the organizations we work with are very interested in placing a rack of this particular configuration in the downtown area. And one of the locations that we're considering is right near the town offices and the Village Green. I don't know if you can get that slide up, but it's, yes, thank you. And this, I'm not going to go through the bike rack ordinances for the town. Although that's good reading, I'm just going to sort of focus on this particular location. And it's far enough away from the sidewalk and from the access road to the town offices so that it would not interfere with the maintenance, the routine maintenance and snow plowing. And so I'm, I'm basically making a request of the Board of Selectment with obviously appropriate comment from the public to move ahead with the planning phase of having a bike racket this location. And I've also asking them to consider if we're not able to raise the money for that particular configuration to consider sort of the U, U-rack configuration that that we had up earlier. These racks are much less expensive. They are highly secure. They can be anchored either to a firm surface or to grass with a small concrete pillar. You can group them in a rail configuration to the right, so you can have six, eight, whatever bikes. And it's a much better solution than the traditional bike rack because it can accommodate electric bikes. It can accommodate locking your frame into locations. You know, it's it's a fairly utilitarian solution. There's all kinds of options that you can include in this, including putting a logo of some kind on the front, which some towns do and organizations. And those, just the individual U-frames are about $250, so you, you can group them together. And the locations that we're considering for new bike racks are included in a map. But before we get to the map, I just also, a portion of my request is that we have bike rack, bike parking signage. I'm a cyclist in town and there are many other cyclists who actually didn't know where a lot of the bike racks are. And in meeting with the Recreation Commission, they support the idea of having bike racks signs, bike parking signs at the beaches. The exact location is to be determined. These signs are like $50 each. But they would be very helpful to visitors and to people who, you know, may or may not maybe traveling from other towns or from other neighborhoods. So I'm also asking the board to approve of putting in bike parking signs at bike rack locations. Just to be clear, I mean, we have this expansive vision of bike racks in terms of a network of accessible bike racks through town, but tonight we're only focusing on approval of the bike rack site at the town offices and at the, and replacing the existing racks at the beaches. I'm not making a request for funding at this time. Our organization has received a $3,000 grant from Dartmouth Health specifically for bike racks in town. That won't cover the entire cost. I'm hoping that the Select Board, the Recreation Commission, small businesses in town will assist in the fundraising. And for your further edification and perusal, I created a little budget of bike rack types and costs from different types of vendors, just for your reference. And you may not want to spend a lot of time with this spreadsheet, certainly not more than I spent with it. But it is just kind of a thumbnail of like various possible sources for the racks and, you know, the timelines for them and the configurations for them. So I think without further ado, I will open up for questions and comment.
Thank you, Russ. Anyone in the audience wish to ask questions? John? Wait for, wait for the mic, please.
How many, are you wanting three racks or site racks?
Yeah, so we're really talking about three locations. The exact bike rack configurations are going to, will be determined at a later point, but yes, I'm basically only focusing on racks at three locations. And let's say, just for discussion purposes, that each rack will accommodate at least eight bicycles.
Okay. And what's the cost of the 24 racks?
So, and this is a really sort of rough estimate, but again, the covered bike rack would be in the neighborhood, depending on the configuration and the number of bikes between eight and $12,000. The covered bike racks with the corral configuration would probably be, depending on the number of racks you again, you put on the rails, but it would probably be about 1,500 each. So I guess, you know, some rough math would indicate that we're sort of talking the neighborhood of $16,000 to $20,000.
Okay, and this, and tell me the need for the covered rack or that many bicyclists that enjoy riding in the rain and snow?
Just to quote a distinguished colleague of mine, Mark Vernon, when he comes to town, he, he locks his bike to a tree or he locks his bike to the handicap sign. And so for a cyclist who come into town and you, and utilize the small businesses in town, you know, this is going to encourage bicycle access to our downtown area. And yes, I would say that it is not, would not be exceptional or unusual in a spring, summer, early fall day to have, you know, at least 10 to 12 cyclists in the immediate vicinity of the town offices throughout the day. So, you know, I think there is a need. We have actually done some analysis of sort of traffic flow patterns in town and non-motorized transportation. So we can absolutely justify the need for this in terms of the number of people who would use it.
Right, but, but the need for covered racks is not a necessity.
Right, yeah.
I'm thinking of maintenance and snow and
Right, yes.
Other issues for Bob to have to deal with.
Right, so, and, and Bob can speak to this, but basically it by having a covered bike rack, it obviously protects the bikes and it provides just convenience to the cyclist and we, you know, I'm not saying that the covered bike racks are a deal breaker, but they've been used in many towns throughout New Hampshire, throughout New England. Just so that people can have sort of a very visible, safe place to park their bikes. And, and some of them even have sort of a, a bike pump, bike repair kind of station within, within the covered bike rack. So I understand, you know, whatever the concerns are around cost, but I think that it would be a clear statement from our town that we take non-motorized transportation very seriously, that we are a welcoming community for a bike list, bicyclist of all ages and abilities. And so I think it is, it is kind of iconic or symbolic of our town's commitment to that particular constituency.
Right. No, I would agree with that part. And I think we are an open town to bicyclists, but just interested in the, you know, the cost and how long do you expect this planning phase to go into implementation phase?
I think that would depend on the availability of funding. I think that as far as as far as just the U-rack installation, you know, at the beaches, I've had some communication in the Recreation Commission. They are very receptive to possibly considering replacing the racks, changing the location and putting the bike parking signs up. But they want a little bit more specificity in the proposal. So I think that that could happen in the next three months, as far as the covered bike rack goes. Without calculating the generosity of people in this room, I would say that we hope to have it in place by, like, November 1. If that, you know, and that maybe that's optimistic, but that's sort of what I'm thinking.
Right. And what happens to the existing racks that we replace?
Yeah, so, you know, I don't, I think there may be some applications that are appropriate for the existing racks. I mean, we have some places where there isn't a lot of bike volume. I mean, we have a bike rack at, at Night Hill Preserve, Nature Preserve. So I think there are applications that are appropriate where, you know, there's very little volume in terms of bikes, but we, we are more or less making a gesture that if somebody wants to bike to a trail, that, that, you know, there will be a bike rack there for them.
Right, but we're talking about the three locations tonight. Is that correct?
Correct. We're only talking about the downtown location and the two beaches, which are on town property. So just to be clear, the town will not be involved in planning or paying for any bike racks that are on private property, obviously. So, small businesses may decide to. Cooperate to install us a bike rack, you know, in front of their coffee house or something like that, but that won't be a town matter. And I do have a map that's included in the presentation, which we shouldn't spend a lot of time on tonight, but I do have a map of sort of. Where we're envisioning bike racks that would be convenient and and helpful to the biking community.
Okay, Joe Cardillo, wait for the mics coming, and then, Mark.
Thanks, Joe Cardillo, Siemens Road. I like the idea, I like what you're doing, and I hope we can move this through fairly quickly, just one housekeeping item. So we don't have a last minute. I, I don't know the answer to this, maybe it's already been looked at, the fact that it's on the town green. Yes, we own that, is there any jurisdiction that the Osmond Sargent has with what we can and can't do? Do they control something there that we need to look into? If so. I think it's just to help move this along, we should check that one off the box, if it's something we need to look at.
Yeah, I think that would be part of the planning phase, Joe, if we move forward. Mark? Up front, Lynn. Get your Fitbit points in.
Mark Vernon, New London. Just wanted to speak in favor of this proposal and, and also the observation that e-bikes are coming, and I think we're gonna see more bike traffic. You know, whether we like it or not, especially on Main Street. So, um, you know, I'm in support of this, thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comments? Yep, go ahead.
Russ, have you seen, say, the covered bike rack? In use in any town that's been outside for several years? Do these things hold up well in the weather?
Well, the particular configuration we're considering has been on loan to communities throughout New Hampshire. For two and a half years, uh, and it doesn't show any really serious signs of wear and tear. I think the model has been, uh, was, has been manufactured for 10 years. I can't really speak to that. Uh, I can say that. This particular model has aluminum framing, heavy, heavy duty gauge aluminum framing. It has tempered glass and it has a barrel roof. It's a, it's a heavy duty plastic. And I did have a close inspection of it, so I would say it's very durable. It is, uh, it is part, the, the U-frame. U-frame bike racks, they have. A heavy duty powder coating. Their steel, um, but I think, I think that. There won't be extensive maintenance costs associated with these. It is possible that, you know, an electric bike bumps against the U-frame or something like that, and it might need like touch-up paint or something like that. But I'm certainly willing to work with the town to ensure that they're, they stay in good condition in terms of our volunteer group, you know. Inspecting them periodically or whatever, um, but that's an excellent question about maintenance.
Okay, it's just a comment, it's interesting to me when we did have the demo. I was struck by how the covering and talk about durability looks so much like bus station, weight stations in, in towns, and those have lasted forever. So I think there's quite a bit of durability to this once you do install it. Okay, so if there's no other questions. Thank you, Russ, and I'll ask the board. If you'd like to entertain his proposal. Which is to do a planning phase for, for racks at both the town beaches and possibly one on the town common. Okay, do you want? Okay, so I made that motion, so then, Jen, are you seconding the motion to move forward with the planning phase? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so thanks, Russ, so we'll look forward to working with you and hearing about, more about the planning phase relative to this. Okay, uh, now we have. A discussion and presentation, I believe, by David Demers on the speeding on concerns for bunker road.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, and I'm, I'm actually a representative of a larger group. That group is some 14 strong now, uh, we're anticipating that we'll have a much larger. Coalition established for what we're going to present tonight. First, I, I, Russ and I met. Earlier and we, I wanted to say how, how. In sync we are with both his survey and the things that he's trying to do. And we recognize that, that there should be a deeper alliance between our efforts and his efforts. So, and I also wanted to take, take a moment before we start to thank. Chief Cobb for helping us. We have met with her, uh, and most importantly, she has been very, uh. Very effective in helping us move toward the improvements that we want around safety on bunker road. And we, and we know through those discussions that while we're speaking to you about bunker road. Bunker road is a representation of other roads that have concern. But in particular, this area for us. Offers perhaps an opportunity to look at one of the most challenging areas around the lake, around A-Lake in town. So I, 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 I'm a resident of bunker road, um, and there are 30 years now. I love the lake, I love the town, I love the people that live around it. And I'm honored to be their spokesperson, I hope I do a decent job of it. Bob, Bob started with some important statistics, I think that I'd like to go back in because they're central to what we're doing. He mentioned that 63% in the survey wanted signage changes to dampen the speed. And, and the second one that pertains to what we're doing here. Is 34% of the population said that motor speed and the number of cars are a growing concern. And while we're here, um, while we're here to talk about. You know, an area of town, uh, the lower part of bunker road. We know already with our outreach. That those two concerns that he raised are common. And so I'd like you to think about our. Designer as perhaps an opportunity for a pilot. Or an area to experiment and look and see whether we could make improvements in this area. Members of our group are here and, and we have neighbors and others here who are supportive of our effort. So I, and we also have some seasoned sage and walkers. Who have 40-plus years of experience trudging up and down around the lake all year round. They will share, after I finish, they'll share some actual experiences that perhaps will help us all understand better. What it's like to try to walk around the lake and also. Also, we know going in that this is not just a motorist problem. Uh, in fact, we know that there are safety issues raised with walkers. And some walk three across and some just heard about today, a near miss with a, with a fellow, an older fellow in the middle of the road. On a bicycle. And someone narrowly missed hitting him because they were coming down the road and didn't see him. So what I, what I'd like to do tonight is share with you three, three things. First, the conditional situation, I've lived there 30 years, but until I prepared tonight to get ready on behalf of our group. I, I didn't know we had a math problem. And we have a math problem down there, and I hope to highlight that for you. The, the second item is that rather than. Bore you with our opinion, yet another opinion on what we might do, we did our homework. And we spent a good deal of time looking and thinking about what we should do. And so I'll share with you what we've done and what we've learned. And then the third area is a set of recommendations. We live in a small town, we're all strapped for, everyone wants something, and we can't do everything. So we tried to rationalize our efforts to prioritize what we think we could do in the beginning. And what we might do over the longer term. And we also. Agreed that we would step up to the plate, particularly with this pilot. Uh, and I'll get into how we might help there. So, um, those are the three things that we have, and then if I could, the, the witness discussions of our, of our experiences in the walkers area. I have a handout which we have right here, and when we get to the actions, I'll, I'll use that, but for the moment. Let me start with, with the conditional situation on the road. We spent some time together as a group and looked at, why is bunker road unique and where on bunker road is it unique? And bunker road is a runway off of Pleasant Street when you're coming down. If you come down Pleasant Street, it's impossible to stay within the speed limit unless, without your foot on the pedal. Unless you put your foot on, on the brake, and it's brake, 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 brake coming down there. Then you make the turn onto, yeah, that's one mile of downhill, then you make another turn. Of essentially another mile of downhill coming down into the Narrows. Bunker is really broken into two, I'd like you to think about it as being broken into two areas. One, the runway down, and then the, if you would, the Narrows landing area where cars come in. And that area is essentially about, the Narrows area is about 1,800 feet. And the runway is a little over a half mile. And, and in that area, again, on bunker. I cannot drive down it without having my foot constantly at 25 on the brakes. And if I do run it at 25, I have a lineup of cars behind me who want to get by me. And I've been passed, just because I'm experimenting, because I went 25, people passed me on the way down bunker road. Now, the, the important part of bunker road. That I think represents a lot of lake roads is that we have line of sight issues. Going down bunker road, there are nine line of sight issues where we have curves or grades that, excuse me, drop, drop down. And prohibit the person who's driving or walking or biking from being able to engage in seeing what's coming at them. And that problem, particularly in that 1,800 feet. If you just do the math on that problem. The reaction time with somebody going 35 miles an hour, 10 over the speed limit. The, and looking at the statistics, I won't read them, but the, the number of feet and seconds to react. Is significantly different between when you're running at 20, 25, and 35. And, and when you think about nine obstacles on line of sight, coupled with the reaction time, we have a problem. The second thing is that we have 20, 20 odd homeowner crossing points. Those are places where like, like my family, where we have a home on one side and water on the other, and we cross the road. And, you know, I think I'm not alone, uh, we have five grandkids, they were just here for 18 days. We're recovering from, from that right now. At one point in, in this week, well, my grandson was here, we have two homes there, a small cabin and a house. My grandson had to crawl into my. Trees that are, they're really essentially a hedge that I inherited when I bought the property. It sits right on the road because a car was coming in there. There are obstacles down there. In addition to 20 homeowners. There are roughly about 10 physical obstacles where you cannot, even if you're walking on the right side of the road. Obeying the rules, you cannot safely get off the road. Because either there are obstacles around growth, you know, trees and such, or the slope of the, the, the road drops down to the lake. And so there's just not adequate space there. And then if you add on the frequency of the walkers and bikers that we have coming in there. I think we're, we're, we're all recognizing. That the lake has two draws, the water. But also the walk around space and the bike around space and the run around space. We have people who park at the end of the lake, we welcome them, but they come there to run or to walk. And so that coupled with the, the, um, the road slope. And the third point right now we're seeing. I, I don't think we're alone, is that distracted drivers are growing in number. It's not anyone's fault. Technology, the speed of the runway down there, uh, the fact that. People don't necessarily obey the walking rules around there. And when two cars come together. Things happen in our property at 624, we had a car go off the road in front of our property. Undoubtedly, he was going too fast, but he claimed that another driver in the opposing traffic. Forced him over to run over the edge of our property. He flew through the air, hit a tree, hit a stone, and plopped his car down next to the water. The only thing that saved him was a guideline for the telephone pole. He managed to tuck it right in there. Now, when you, the math problem is when you add all those things together. And you put. The speed limit that we currently have and the speeders that go down that area. It, they just don't match. So we, we, you know, we all agree. That the things that were in that survey of speed and signage and other areas make sense. On, on the prep steps, we spent a month with discussions with the state of New Hampshire traffic experts. We made an outreach to Karen Ebel. And she's worked on the highway department and the, the seasonal speed reductions of. 20 miles an hour that are now in place. We benchmarked. Town actions in other places that are similar to ours. And we held discussions with police departments and, and various town spokespeople. In areas where we were told they have a shared similar situation to ours. And we also then went to Adam. Adam helped us find a safety engineer consulting firm. Bob Ruggles contacted that firm. And we, we engaged them on a discussion around how does a survey work? And what would they cover if they did a safety survey for us? And they gave us some tips that helped us with our recommendations. We in particular identified best practices, and we think we have a pretty good handle on that in our recommendation area. We photographed and mapped out all the constrained areas and the points in, in the lower area of bunker road. We have those available for you. And we have also initiated our first outreach to PLPA and to the Slope and Shore Boards. And they've asked us to come before them in the spirit of forming that coalition. So that we can propose to them specific things that we can do. The board members who we've spoken to have welcomed our work and encouraged us to go forward. Our desire and our vision in this is to be a good partner, a responsible partner with the town on this area. Everywhere we went. On all of the, the benchmarks we, we went to, we heard there is no single solution. There is a need for community involvement, there is a need for co-investment, there is a need for education. We know that we need to do that. While I'm going to talk to you about the lower part of bunker road. I want you, I really do want you to think about it as a starting point. You can't cover everywhere in the town, although everyone wants you to. And we know that that's not reasonable, but we think we've got one of the most difficult spots to look at. And we do think that we've got a way to go after that. So I, I'd like to now look at the actions that we have here and what we were thinking about. We, we're realists, if I could, I'll stand up. My eyeballs are better done when used when I can get a little closer. We have two, two ideas here, one is that, you know, out of the gate, we think that there are things that we can do right away. And those are things that we thought long and hard on, and we hope to get some feedback and perhaps a decision from you moving forward on that. And then the second one is a longer term. And then the second one is a, a longer term effort, if you would, for what we think would be a responsible way to move forward. Now, the first, the first action that we have in here is to look at a best practice that we found. And you'll see in here a little bit deeper into it that we identified a number of towns, but, but Lake Sunapee. Thank, thank you very much. Yep. Lake Sunapee is, as a close living example of how things can get better. And in their case, and what we have here, we, we think that moving toward a permanent placement of feedback signs. Those are the ones that tell you, you know, you're doing thirty-five or forty or fifty, whatever it is you're doing. And Sunapee has said to us, you know, you really should think about this in the shift from moving them site to site, because there are lots of spots in town where we need it. Think about trying to put them into a permanent position. And we think the permanent position in this area, a good pilot would be to place permanent signs in the lower area where the runway turns into the narrows and where the risk factors for drivers and, and all the pedestrians are the worst. Now, in, in that approach, we, we know that there may be some funding constraints on that. We'll, we'll speak to that. The second piece of that is in this second action area. We've met with Kim and Chief Cobb and we had a productive discussion this week. We know that there may be money through, eventually, money through funding mechanisms that are either state or federal that might help us with that signage area, but it'll take time. And so in this case, what we're, what we've, what we believe we can do is we're willing, those of us who are in this coalition area, to stand up and be the frontrunner for fundraising for this. We hope to do it not singularly, we hope to do it as a coalition. And the work with, with other members of our neighbors at PLPA and also at Silk and Shore should help us with that. We found that, that Sunapee has a model which I believe Chief Cobb has said would work also. They give the donations to the Benevolent Association. And the Benevolent Association then purchases the, the signs. And those signs come in varying levels of sophistication. The better ones cover data management. You can actually track the, the volume of traffic, the speed, the times of day when people enter through there. We think that would be a smart thing to try if we could, recognizing it would cost us a little bit more. But that might allow us to know when we should be looking. When are the times of day, the days, you know, is it commuters going through? Is it regular people going through throughout the day? We think that's important. They, they also are following the state's lead around a seasonal speed reduction down to twenty miles per hour. And that seasonal reduction, the state has approved it. And, and we talked to the state about that. And we've also talked to our representative about that who's in favor of it. We know that there's controversy over it. We know that bringing it down to twenty alone is not enough. However, they've determined that coupling it together with the signs is an effective way of doing this. All we're asking for here, we're not making the conditional ask of you, but we're saying we ought to look at Sunapee's model and see how we tie these things together. Karen Ebel says it's a good idea as well. And she entered a document into the record for us today too as well. That I think I sent over to Kim. So if we can go up, Kim on that a little bit. The, I think the other way. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. So I mentioned already that, you know, that there's a group of stakeholders already who have said, you know, put your trust in us, we will start. We'll work on the fundraising piece of that to get this up and running faster for you. Action two, action two concerns, taking the great work that, that, that Chief Cobb has done and trying to reinforce that behavioral change. In Sunapee, there isn't any of us that don't slow down going down Route eleven when you go through about the elementary school. You do it automatically. Your foot is on the brake. Their, their downhill slope is just like our downhill slope. Pleasant Street to bunker road is the runway equivalency and, you know, in, in their town. Patterns of behavior get changed over time. We think that having, independent of whether we go twenty-five or twenty, people will go ten miles over it, whatever it is. And so we want to have a pattern of trying to have more, as, as best we can with the limited resources, more capability to be able to have visibility to the police officers and more warnings. We don't care about tickets. But if you get stopped on that road and you're slowed down and you don't make it to work or wherever you're going, then that's, that's a learning behavioral modification for us. So that's what we have in action two. Then longer term, we mentioned that we, we think, while we spent a month and a half or so doing benchmarking work, we're novice. We don't really, you know, I can't say that we know what, you know, everything that we should do. We do know that there are people that do know that. And we did our diligence on that. We have, we have a qualification sheet. We know that we'd have to go out to bid for this, but the price of a study and the inclusion of the study should be more than just the traffic volume. It should be the conditions of the road and what best practices are for these conditions to handle the two issues that were big in, you know, in that survey coming through. Prices and Kim confirmed, I think, prices were between six and ten thousand plus minus two in this area, I think. Is that right? And we know that there are other studies waiting in the, in the, in the line ahead of ours. So we recognize that, that that has to be a line item. And again, I think there could be an opportunity for some town support or other support contributions, if you would, for this. But we think that would give us a longer term view of looking at how do we handle safety on roads like we have here, where we have conditional problems. We, we think based on what they've told us already, that it's a complicated problem. And we need to have a, an integrated solution to be able to make this work. Again, we think our pilot would be an interesting one, but it may be better to have a, a broader scope of this study. We would love to have that this year. We know we can't. We've spoken already and we know that the budget doesn't, doesn't necessarily allow that. If by chance there is a way to do that, we would love to have that. But we put it into our, our forward view. And then we have a bunch of actions that we've identified. Yep. You know, there are things like, well, should you put a, a line in the road? Many, many cars go in the middle of the road down bunker road because they can't navigate through the obstacles of line of sight issues. But, but there's a controversy over that and we, we don't know. Some people say, you know, experts say you should, some don't. We know also that, that we need to educate the walkers. And, and we believe that through our coalition with all the owners and Silk and Shore and PLPA, we can begin an education there and telling people, you know, what to watch out for. We had some ideas, I think it came from our meeting about having loner vests at the end of the lake for visibility. It's, it, you know, it's sort of like the loner bike idea. It makes sense. We think that just like we have signage at the base of the lake for fishermen, watching weeds that come in, you know, and so on. There could be signage at the base of the lake and additional signage to walkers, telling them, no, you shouldn't ride in the middle of the road. No, you shouldn't have three people and you should walk on the right side of the road. Can't, signs alone won't work without the behavioral change. So we, we want to have that. But educational partnerships, we think we can pull off. And, and then the adherence to that is, in particular, will come from their observations of police presence in there. A lot of people think this problem is one where you just have to have police there twenty-four hours a day. And we know that's not possible. But we would love to have as many hours as we could down there. And, and our, our hope is that, that the safety study will tell us what our priorities should be beyond the first two that we gave you. So there may be other ideas that are in the group here tonight. We have two, three, I think we're going to have three people that are going to speak to us. I think Susan Nye has, I, I, I've watched Susan day in, day out, year round, winter, summer, rain, fall, whatever it may be. She's on the road. And she's here with her dad, I think, somewhere behind me there. There she is. Susan, could you just lead, lead us off a little bit? I've, I've asked Susan because she sees the narrows and the runway and, and she has some, she's run the lake for twenty years and she's walked the lake for twenty years. Could you give us some insights?
My name is Susan Nye and I live on Lake Shore Drive at the Elkins End. I started as a seasonal resident in New London, lived near Pleasant Lake the whole time since nineteen sixty-six. I became a full-time resident in two thousand and three. I've been running or walking around the lake since nineteen seventy-nine. So that's who I am in terms of Pleasant Lake and my walking activity. Since I became a year-round registered to vote, taxpaying, bona fide resident of New London, I figured that I have probably logged thirty-two thousand miles around Pleasant Lake.
It's our best expert witness.
And that is probably the equivalent of five and a half round trips to San Francisco and a lot of worn out sneakers. So with all that, oh, the other thing is I live right on Lake Shore Drive and my kitchen window above the sink looks right out onto the street. So if you pass me first thing in the morning, I see you. So with that, what I have observed is that a lot of drivers, a lot of walkers and a lot of, and less runners really don't know what they're doing in terms of, they need education in terms of pedestrian safety. The road gets narrow in places. It's can be a little scary, particularly in the winter when there's no shoulder. So everybody needs some, some education. In particular, I think that they need to know that you move against the traffic if you're a walker and with the traffic if you're a cyclist. The other thing that I would say is these two, three and four across is probably not a good idea. Part of the reason you walk facing the traffic is because you see the car and you quickly reconfigure yourself into single file. It doesn't take a lot of energy to do that. It's very easy. I do it all the time with one of my walking partners. To drivers, what I would say is like now and forever, slow down. And my message to you would be there are kids, there are dogs, there are old people, there are lots of people around. So drive like this is your neighborhood. I think that's something, particularly first thing in the morning, there are people on their way to work. And they look at bunker road and Lake Shore Drive as a commuting road. It is my neighborhood. And I would ask those people to drive as if it was their neighborhood, as if their kids live there, as if their grandchildren were visiting there with their rambunctious new puppy, as if their dad was trying to take his, you know, my, my nearly deaf dad was trying to take his afternoon walk. And slow down, you know, unless you've got someone bleeding in the backseat of your car, just slow down. And that's it. Thank you for your consideration.
And Lynn Anna Carrico is a neighbor of ours down here. Lynn, Lynn, I'm not sure who has more seniority in the number of years, but it's close probably.
Sure. I don't either. I used to be a teacher. I'm very, okay. Um, my name is Lynn Anna Carrico. I have.
Yeah, excuse me. We, we're using the mics also because we're recording. So it makes for better clarity. Thank you.
My name is Lynn Anna Carrico. I have been on bunker road since nineteen eighty as an property owner. As a kid, I came up and visited the previous owners. I raised three boys. I now have four grandchildren that come. I've walked many a dog on that road. It's a combination of things. The big thing is education for everyone. You know, what side of the road are you supposed to be walking on? What side of the road should you be biking on? But twenty-five miles an hour does not get obeyed. And I think a lot of people that drive that road don't even have a clue how fast they're going till all of a sudden they come around a corner and, oh my God, there's somebody there in, in the road. And there's a lot of places you cannot move over to the side. I did one time because there were people coming, there was a car coming from both ways. The one that I was facing did not stop, even though there was somebody coming the other way. I had to jump off to the side of the road and it was a ditch there. I wrecked my ankle and I now have a knee replacement. I don't think that helped any. But again, there's walkers that are two and three abreast and they're on the wrong side. The bikers that are down the middle of the road, I understand it. I ride my bike there. I walk there. I've walked my grandchildren, my dogs, my children. We walk the road and it, it's gotten a lot busier because there's a lot more houses on bunker road. So that, you know, since nineteen eighty, there's a lot more houses there. And it is a beautiful road. That's why I live there. But it's beautiful. But if you're going too fast and you're trying to see how beautiful the scenery is, you're not watching the road. And the same thing with the walkers. They're not totally aware of what they're doing. They're talking with somebody or they're looking at the scenery and not realizing that I'm on the wrong side or look at the loons out there. And you're not aware that you're on the wrong side and there are cars coming. And again, there's that education for the drivers. If there's a car coming both ways, who stops? It's the one that the, that your obstruction is on, but that's not what, what ends up happening. And as I said, the, if the big thing is education. People don't realize how fast they're going. I've had cars go by me at twenty-five miles an hour and I know what twenty-five miles an hour looks like because I've made my husband go past me at twenty-five miles an hour. And then I'll have somebody go by me that I'll, they're flying by me. And when I say something, just slow down, they get upset with me. I don't think they have a clue that they're going a lot faster than twenty-five miles an hour. I think those signs will let them be aware that they're going how fast. And sometimes they're, you know, you think, oh my God, more signs. But I think we need them, especially in the narrows. I'd like to see something done. I'm now one of the old folks that is walking the road. I'd love to think my house is going to stay in my family. I know it's going to. I've got, I've got grandchildren that is still going to come up and great grandchildren, hopefully eventually. And I'd like to think that we can get that bunker road to become a safe place. Thank you.
Um, Bob, Bob, did you, Bob Ruggles, did you want to share that story or? Or we have one, one last story and now if I could, I'll come back to you just one second. But no, this isn't just historic. I mean, Bob's had kids every day for, for what, a month now, I think, in your home.
So I'm Bob Ruggles, eight twenty-three bunker road. So I'm a stand-in for my daughter with regard to this story. And she's home getting dinner for ten grandkids. So I, I was not going to go do that. So. Yeah, those are not only her children, there are other children. Thank you. Thank you for that. Anyways, look, I think that, so, so one, I would just say that for anyone who has walked, biked, walked a dog, done anything on bunker road, you've had an experience where a car made you move over or was going too fast or whatever. I, so I, I think anyone who's walked on bunker road will have that. There's one particular story, my daughter, actually all my daughters are runners and they run on bunker road. And recently she was actually right on the other side of. And recently she was actually right on the other side of, of David's house and a car ran by, someone was not, we found out this later, was not paying attention to driving. And she nearly killed my daughter and she, my daughter had no place to go because the, the lake is right there and she had no place to go.
Where's the baby car?
So, so, and I think that anyone, Ron Racko walks Wallace, his dog, every morning. He has many, many stories. So I think that, that the point that was made just a minute ago was we need to get something done. And talking, and we've, we've started to do more. We've come and complained before, but we didn't have anything to say about, well, what should we do? How should we correct this problem? It was just complaining. So we have talked, I have talked personally with the police department in Sunapee. They have feedback signs. They say those work the best. I talked with a traffic consultant personally. He said, feedback signs work the best. So one of our primary asks was feedback signs. Wanted each end of the narrows to make people aware that they're entering an area where there are walkers that you're not going to see, bikers that you're not going to see, and you don't want to hit them. So the feedback signs wake people up. So that's our big ask. There are more asks down the road. There's education, there's all kinds of things that we're looking at. The feedback signs are, are the primary ask. And hopefully we can help with that through the benevolent association or however we get this accomplished, but we need to do something and not just talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob.
So thank you. So David, is, is this the end of the formal presentation?
Yep.
Okay. So then what I'd like to do is to open it up to the general audience with regards to comments or questions. Yes, sir.
Tom Flynn, I don't think I've ever been on Bunker Road, to tell you the truth. But I think, you know, the solution here might be very obvious is you put in speed bumps. You put in a speed bump every 300 yards or whatever. And the first time a car goes over that, over, over the speed limit, it feels like he's ripping his rear end out and he slows down. And you put up signs saying, we mean it, there's speed bumps ahead. And, uh, you know, I, you know, that'll enforce a speed limit that obviously you folks are concerned about. I mean, it's, you know, putting in asphalt, it's going to be a lot cheaper than putting in a lot of electronic stuff too.
Well, I think what we found, and we've spoken before, there's a lot of concern about that because you can also lose control of the car in one of those blind spots. And then we might have somebody either going off into the water or, or somebody getting hit.
Well.
But we understand this is probably something that the, the, the speed expert should consider.
Speed bumps work. People slow down. Yeah.
Right mind and right position and we thought that that should be the. And I believe that was the door we wanted to knock on right away. Our members, we don't want to, we didn't want to go a bridge too far.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Lyon, New London. So we moved here four years ago and within two weeks, we were told by three of our neighbors, whatever you do, don't speed through the town of Sunapee. You will get a ticket. So I appreciate you bringing it up because that's been my direct experience.
Yes.
I probably shouldn't say this, but it's probably the only place in town or around town where I don't go over the speed limit is going into Sunapee. And my fear is getting a ticket. Now, I don't know, I've never looked into the stats about how many tickets are given out. I have no clue, but my fear is there of getting a ticket, which I just slow down. I won't have to get one and pay it. So I, as much as I agree with everything you've said, I've been on Bunker Road. I'm only on it once or twice a year. I know that road, it's, it's, it's tricky. And to think of people passing on that road is terrifying. But I do disagree when you said, well, we don't want to give out tickets, just give them a warning. Have you considered working with the police department, setting up a speed trap for like a week straight and giving out 150 tickets? So word gets out and people say, hey, when you go to Dowby Pleasant Lake on Bunker Road, you're going to get a ticket.
Yeah, our, our, our second ask in there in the short term was to have more coverage. But we also recognize with Chief Cobb that there are many people on many roads that want to.
Not to have coverage, to specifically enforce the law and give out tickets. So the reputation of your road is you don't speed on that road. That's, that's my point.
I, I, I personally, I totally agree. And I think we're all supportive of that idea. And, you know, I think a chief cop could better speak to that probably and whether that's doable.
Because if you have the signs up there that tell me to slow down, it says you're going 35, slow down. If I don't have any fear, why would I slow down? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I, just to comment, I think we're not going to resolve these matters this evening. As I understand it, your action items are looking for support from the town to continue your planning process and examining the issues. But we've got another comment in the back.
Yep.
My name is Sally Keating and I live on Burpee Hill. I don't know that there are any other people from Burpee Hill up here. However, we have similar complaints to what is happening down on, on Bunker Hill, Bunker Road. Maybe not the degree of difficulty there, but certainly a feeling that the speeders and, and through truckers are not being monitored perhaps in the way that they should. I think that this concept of making a more global approach, bringing in the town, bringing in a consultant and working with the police department is excellent. And I just would like to say that I think this is a community problem and that what is happening down at Pleasant Lake is a exaggeration of a greater problem. And I also really agree with this statement about Sunapee. People know when you go into Sunapee, you slow down. Why? Why do they know that? Also, I believe that people know when you're approaching on Route 11, when you're approaching, I wanted to say Chrisinnies, but I'm going to say Hannafords, that stretch of Route 11. They know to slow down to, to 30. Why do they know to do that? So let's kind of look at this in, in kind of a global way, perhaps for our community. What can, what can happen here to help resolve this speeding and traffic problem? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. And then we'll go to.
So Mike Morgan, little Sunapee Road resident. Wendy Parker is part of our informal coalition. I, I applaud what the Bunker Road folks have done a lot more than we have. So we will steal some of your ideas. But many of them, many of them, we have already presented ourselves to Kim and the chief and Bob with the same level of concern. 114 between TLV and the town is a raceway. It's a commuter route. It's a state road, so there is a little bit of a difference there, a little bit more of a challenge. But I would applaud the town and the chief in particular for trying to take a proactive approach to this. I do think this is a, a behavioral mentality change that we're looking for. So whether it's, you know, achieving what Sunapee has done with its feedback sign, which I fully support, or whether it's a series of other measures that over time create the environment that we're hoping for. I also think, given the way this town works, is a lot of this is word of mouth. So the more we can collectively talk to neighbors and friends and visitors about, hey, don't walk through your breast, don't speed, this is not the way this town operates. It may take a little longer, but that's ultimately, that's the kind of serious change that we're looking for. So happy to work with you more closely if that, that makes a difference for you, but heartily endorse what you, what your presentation put forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Over here and then we'll come back up to you. Go ahead. I'm sorry. You're up.
Marilyn Soper, 178 Old Main Street. And the three of us are old Main Street residents here, wanting to join with you and the Burpee Hill Road folks and the Knights Hill Road folks and, and those who are dealing with this. On Old Main Street, we have a dirt section of the road, as most of you probably know. It's a cut through from Route 11 up to the center of town. We moved there last August and immediately were aware of how many trucks come through, even though the signs say no through trucks at both ends of the road. We were very fortunate to connect with Lieutenant Keith, who came out and actually did a week's worth of readings of speeds on Old Main Street and could see that there were people going a lot faster. This summer, it has gotten worse. If we're out with our dogs and walking, we will find people who are going 40, 45, 50 miles an hour through there. And if we ask them to slow down, or sometimes we have to holler at them, we're lucky to get saluted. And they keep going. So it's become a disrespect problem as much as it is a speed problem. And I think I can speak for my friends here that we would like to also become part of whatever the larger coalition is that works on this for the town of New London.
This morning, we thought about changing our name from Bunker Road Coalition to something larger. And this is certainly an impetus for us to look at, at a broader view.
Absolutely. We'd love to be part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Art Scutro, I live on West Side Drive. We have a similar speeding issue in that we are trapped in a 50 mile an hour zone trying to get out of West Side Drive by people coming off 89 and getting on 89. We've been working with this for many years, knew, knew the area, but it was tried two other times before. It's a state road, of course, and they are resisting in the efforts we're making. We just had a traffic study completed and I have the results right here. We got them today. Thank you, Kim, for sending them over. But we'd like to join this coalition as well because of, we can't get the speed limit reduced. We've got literally three and a half to four seconds to react. Of course, we have, just as you do, a runway coming down 89.
Yes.
We have line of sight, we can only see 300 feet.
Yes.
Now there are weeds grown, so you can't even see through the weeds. And lastly, feet and seconds to react is, as I just said, very few. So we'll, we'll join your group if we can.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Colin.
Thank you. Colin Beasley, King Hill Road. It's a town-wide issue and it's a behavioral issue. King Hill Road, I drive down Bog Road, I drive down Pleasant Street. There's hills all over town. It's an H of the community. Speeding is everywhere. So somehow the town needs to change behavior. And in my opinion, the only way to do that is through enforcement and education. Right? But I, I equally heard when I first moved here, be careful of Sunapee. Right? So, and I can recall being in a meeting here a few years ago when the chief's predecessor talked about not giving tickets unless someone's going 15 miles over the speed limit because courts forgive that. My view is let the person go to court. Give them a ticket at, you know, whatever the federal court says if it's five miles over. But if you're doing 10 miles over, you get a ticket. Want to go to court, leave work, go to court, figure it out. If you get relieved, that's great. Ticket, ticket, ticket. Enforcement. And, and I understand that the, the police department has limited resources. I respect that. But I do think that it's a behavioral issue and it has to start with all of us communicating and enforcing. Just my point of view.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yeah, could I add one, one other point to, you know, Chief Cobb has been a partner with us in this work effort to date. They have put more people on watch down there. We now have guys who sit in the driveways outside of the police car who aim the gun. And I know for one going by them, it, it puts a memory in your mind, you know, like I should really watch out for this. So we're, we're not, we're, we, I didn't mean to say that we don't want, we don't want more tickets. What we are saying is presence is important. And, and that's, that's important to start. And, and I think you are, you are trying your best, but you can hear tonight, everybody wants you in every place. So Sunapee is, I'd like to close on saying that, you know, we're prepared in our section to move ahead on the funding side of this, to not have it be an obstacle for us. What we're looking for tonight is your agreement that you would allow us to go forward with that, if that's agreeable, you know, to, to, to begin the process of building our coalition, to begin the process, if you would, of someone, some of us stepping forward to help cover the cost of those signs, to get them up and running. And we'll learn a lot from that. Permanent placement with monitoring data management of those signs and more presence of the police around those signs. And maybe thinking about what Sunapee is doing of convergence around 20 seasonal speed plus the signs and other factors. They certainly have made an impression on all of us. And we think that there'd be a good place to start. We'd like to have, you know, post getting those two things that we've said. We want an opportunity to go over and have a little site visit and talk to the Sunapee folks and learn more. And maybe there are some other places, we, we've got several, but that would be a good place to start. And we will form, we're already agreed to form a coalition with the walkers and bikers. And tonight, if you stop by and give me a contact point, we'll, we'll follow up with you on, on building a bit, a bigger coalition to make it easier for you, one voice.
Yep. So Bill or Jenna, do you? Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, Emily.
I thought I would just come up here rather than make everyone turn around. So if you don't know, I'm Chief Cobb, I'm the chief of police here in town. And I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and sharing your concerns. It is really helpful for us to hear from it, from you. But I heard no less than, I think, 10 roads of, of folks that want enforcement. So every hour we're on Burpee Hill Road, we're not on Bunker Road and vice versa. So we truly are doing our best while still maintaining the response to calls that we have to do, like medical calls, crashes, domestic violence, civil matters, accidents, everything like that. So we are trying, I can assure you of that. It's not that we don't want to be down there for hours at a time, but sometimes we have other things that, that draw us away from it. I have a few things just to respond with is I'm, I'm really glad to hear that. I think the, the tone is that it's a community effort to, to resolve. And much like the drug problem that we can't arrest our way out of, we can't ticket our way out of a speeding problem here. I think it's going to be a well-rounded effort from community members. So I'm really encouraged to hear that and I'm happy about that. I, I don't set quotas on tickets in town, nor would I have a desire to do that because I think once you start setting quotas, like an officer shall write 10 tickets a week, I think you start running into a problem of some, some tickets that probably shouldn't have been written in the first place because the officer might be worried about meeting that quota. So I would never set quotas at the New London Police Department. That would not be an expectation. Officers have discretion when they stop a car. So based on the conditions at the time, the speed that they were going, the area that they were in, what the driver was going through at that time, what all, there's a lot of factors that go into whether or not an officer decides to, to give a ticket or to give a warning because the purpose of motor vehicle enforcement is to change driver behavior. So I just wanted to say that about ticketing and quotas and things like that. I don't believe in them because I think that they, they damage the integrity of the ticket itself. If, if you were to try to tell officers, you have to write X amount of tickets a week or something like that. We do have a, a machine that allows us to track some speed data. And so we just had it down on Little Sunapee Road. And so I think the next stop it's going to make will be Bunker Road. And we played, placed that out for a week at a time and it gives us information like what the average speed was, about how many vehicles were analyzed. And then we can set that to enforceable violations. So if the speed limit is 30, we would set an enforceable violation at 40 miles an hour or over. But we, we have the ability to set that. So if we want to lessen the, the sensitivity of that and have an enforceable violation at five miles an hour, we could do that too. So we do have that capability. And like I said, I think it'll go to Bunker Road next.
Just a question, that, that data capability, does it date, timestamp it as well in terms of getting at some of other times during the day that it's more?
Yes. Yeah, like the little Sunapee Road speed data analysis that we had, the peak time of violations for that week was at 3:31 PM on a certain day. So, so it does give us some, some feedback like that so that we know if we see a lot of violations or a lot of speeding from 6 to 10 AM, that's probably a morning commute and et cetera. So we do. So we do have some some data that we can glean from that so that we can try to tailor our enforcement efforts to be more effective.
Right.
Okay. Another thing I heard tonight was the consistent messaging across town. So it's it's not that we want to make sure that we only enforce and people only slow down on Bunker Road. It's that people slow down on Little Sunapee Road and Knights Hill Road and Bog Road and Old Main. So I think the consistent messaging, and someone mentioned it here tonight, is the the more conversation that you folks can have along town with your your neighbors and friends. And I think it all will be helpful in the end. The feedback signs, we, they range in price from about two thousand dollars to seven thousand dollars, depending on what model you want to get. And I I just wanted to mention about the feedback signs. I think that they are a good thing, but it just, the there is a maintenance required to them. And it depends on where you're putting it, if it's going to be able to be a solar feedback sign because some places on Bunker Road, you might not want a solar one because there's not enough sunlight to keep it charged. So those are some things that we would look at if we were to to get some sort of funding for that. And then, of course, there's the maintenance of the sign over time. Right now, Sergeant Lamson is in charge of all of those speed signs. So it just creates some more administrative work, which isn't a problem. But if we have all of a sudden twenty speed signs around town, that's another layer of administrative function that we have to just incorporate into our our daily activities. So those were just a few of the the notes that I had written down. Again, I'm really glad to hear that it's a community approach because I don't think we can ticket our way out of the problem. And, you know, you mentioned Doug or Dave about the the gun that that was pointed by the after it was a radar gun.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. I should clarify.
That's okay.
It had an equal effect on me.
It does. Yes, yes. So so, yeah, I think so. And I'm glad to hear about all of this. And the police department does look forward to trying to to change the behavior overall. But being a community approach, it's it's very typical New London fashion. Everybody wants to chip in, and everyone wants to be a part of the solution. So I'm glad to hear that.
Great. Thanks, Emily.
Thanks.
So thank you, everybody. This has been a very informative discussion. I think we have to do this as a community. I'll add my name to the list of people who lives on a road that's goes into a state highway that where people continue to go at fifty miles an hour in a thirty mile an hour zone. And Chief Cobb knows about that area, too. So every one of us has this problem, and I I think it's good that we're raising it up to the community level and discussion that just could go on and on. And I hope, Manette, that you will give good coverage to this. I see. I bet that's true. So thank you, everybody, for their comments tonight. This has been very helpful.
Thank you. Janet, did you want to say? So I'm going to attempt to put this into a motion for us to act on. As I understand, your request was to look at two actions. One was, and it is the Community in Town Partnership Approach to establishing permanent placement of speed feedback signs. The second action item was to work with the New London Police Department and continue to do an analysis of enhanced enforcement efforts that might work particularly in these areas. I would suggest, because I've heard it several times, and Bill also just mentioned it, that the group and an action item be to explore and analysis of what would be the most effective educational approaches in terms of, you know, educating people about safe driving and so forth. And so I will put that forward as a motion to my colleagues and ask for a second.
I'll second that. My question would be, though, with regard to the feedback signs, and I'm absolutely in favor of them. They work. I live off Siemens Road, so I I know that it works when I get to the top of it. However, I don't know where we will get the money to pay for them at this point. So that that would be my my question.
That's part of the action one.
You're gonna?
Yeah, I'm glad you, right. We would take the lead on on driving that to to completion. You know, we'd have to obviously get a spec on on the signs that Centipede has said they would help us. I'm with that, but but Chief Cobb has experience. And we do think the data side would be an important element of it. Then, you know, the folks that are, some of whom are in this room, some not, have already voiced their desire to not let the monetary challenge be the obstacle for your saying yes.
No, that that's not an obstacle, except that I would like to see this happen sooner rather than later. I'd like to see it happen tomorrow if we can figure it out.
We're we're, are we a hundred percent there? We're we're totally with you on that. We do have some stop-offs, which wouldn't prohibit us from moving tomorrow. But the Soap and Shore Association, which is a big part of education, too. You know, they have a lot of landowners. And in our, in our case, PLPA, they have voiced an interest in wanting to look at safety, too. So we would love to do that if we can. But I think with nods of the head, our group are saying we're ready to go forward, and tomorrow would be a wonderful goal to set. If if that, if that's possible, we know we can't do it tomorrow, but we'll we'll begin the the due diligence work to get that one done. And while we won't solve all of it, we'll give a pilot, perhaps.
So I've set a motion for to recommend approval of the proposal that's been brought before us. Is there a second?
I seconded.
You did second it. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. And just a quick note, I might think that, you know, recommended name change just might be Safe Roads New London Coalition or something. But anyways, I'm sure you'll be clever and come up with something. But thank you all, and thank you very much for both your feedback, your suggestions, and coming forward. And I, too, would support the coalition working together as a partnership. So thank you.
Thank you. If anyone wants to make a contact in the other groups, we're here for you.
So we do have a number of things still on the agenda for the meeting. So I would ask if you are leaving, if you could do so as quietly as possible so we can go forward. So are there any other public comments to come before the board tonight? Okay, John? If we could exit quietly, I appreciate.
I just wanted to mention that the energy.
Into the hall. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Yep, that the Energy Committee will be starting our electric bike loan program on July twentieth to August ninth. Pickups will be at Whipple Hall, and you can get online. And I think, Kim, we put something in the town municipal matters. So I just want everyone to be aware of that, that it's actually in line with what Russ and Doug just spoke about.
Perfect. Thanks, John. Any other public comment before we move forward? Okay, so old business. We had a presentation by Chief Cobb and the Subcommittee with regards to the police station site review. And the presentation was done on June ninth to the board. And we really have not had any public comment with regards to follow up on our side relative to the board. So I'm asking my colleagues if anyone would like to make a statement at this point in terms of the response to that report.
Thank you.
Well, we did that. I'm just, but how we're going to proceed or where we are with regards to that?
Go ahead, Bill.
John, I thought you were going, no?
No, I just, no, I don't.
Sure. I think, first of all, there've been some questions along along the way about when are we going to talk about Attachment E to that report, which was the, some fourteen different points about the cost of construction, cost of towers, soil tests, et cetera, et cetera. And the simple answer to that is we can't possibly begin to have those discussions till we have a site to do all of that work on. So that's premature at the least to worry about Attachment E at this point until we come up with a site. Excuse me, Bob, I'm still talking. Okay? As far as other things are concerned, there's been concern that we have had some meetings in a non-public session. And the reason for doing that is very straightforward. One of the three statutory provisions that allows us to do that is when we are talking about the purchase, sale, or lease of property. It's a very standard practice in the real estate industry, which I've been involved in since nineteen eighty-five, to not negotiate the purchase and sale of property in the public and show your hand as to what you're trying to do. So we continue to work on that, and we are, every meeting, we talk about it and take steps. We only meet every two weeks, and we don't have any meetings in between. So it may seem like some time since June ninth, but it's only only had three meetings since then. So that's all I have to say.
Bob? Go wait, wait for the microphone, please, just because you're in the back.
I'm a little concerned about that presentation of the analysis that Bill has just given us. The intent, I believe, of the site committee, and I think the correct intent is to select a site based on an analysis of the factors that go into it. For example, if the cost of correcting wetlands or building or making additions or various engineering aspects, et cetera, varies from one site to the other depending on the circumstances, that would be a factor in reaching any conclusion by the selectmen as to what might be the correct site. So the intent, I believe, and there are other members of the Subcommittee here, was that those are the kinds of things, those fourteen items, at least to some degree, affect greatly whether you make a decision as to one site or another. So I guess I would take issue with Selectman Helm's position that you select the site first and then figure out what it costs or what the problems are. Rather, you should figure out the costs and what the problems are in order to determine what might be the more appropriate site. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I think the answer is, though, there's absolutely no sense spending time, money, or anything else on a site that is not available or workable for the for the town. And we have not, up to up to now, determined whether any or all the sites that were recommended are are suitable for that analysis. It may be more than one will be done, but we're not there yet. Again, remember, we've only had three meetings since since your report. And and those meetings take place at the end of this meeting, and they're very short because we try to hold ourselves to two hours. So you may think that we're not doing anything, but we are doing some things, and we're doing it in as a professional manner as we can.
Okay. There's no further comments on that. The next item under old business is confirm the formation of the Whipple Hall 2022 Project Committee. Couple of meetings ago, Phil came before us and did a presentation on, excuse me, the where we were with working on that committee with Rip Cross and 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 others with regards to all of the itemization that needs to take place of activities. But we never took a formal vote to sort of bless the formation of that committee, so we need to do that. So I'll make a motion to establish and accept the proposals here relative to the work that needs to be done by the Whipple Hall 2022 Project Committee.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, we have the Establish the Waste Reduction Committee, which is, as I understand it, the renaming of the Solid Waste Committee. Is that true?
That's the proposal at this point, I think.
Okay.
Over the last couple of meetings, we've listened carefully to what different people had to say about what exactly the focus of this committee ought to be. So I think that's where we are now, is to take the word solid out of the title.
I see. And there was a question that was posed by one of the potential members through an email. Were you able to respond to that?
I'm not sure what question you're referring to.
Joy had submitted a question about the formation of the committee. Yeah. To us.
Man, I I thought our goal was to formally name people to the committee this evening.
Okay, all right.
And and then have that group work through Kim's office to determine a common time to begin to meet. Because unlike the Whipple Hall Committee, we still have to, first of all, name members and have them sworn in to be on the committee. So is that, so we, the last meeting?
They don't have to be sworn in to be on the committee. It's a work committee. So are you?
So I'm, I was ready, having through the municipal matters, had an article about this, and several people have contacted either Kim or me, or maybe either of you, saying they'd like to serve in the committee. And so far, that group, and I see two of them here tonight, Jerry Gold and Liz Meller, but also Maureen Proll and Joy Cubid and Jerry Coogan. And so I would also like, as you're doing with the Whipple Hall Committee, to jo- join them for a while and help get organized and bring the information back here.
Okay.
I think it's a good practice for us to do that once with these committees that we have the short timeframe on that we hopefully are going to end up taking some action on.
So we'll wait until you meet with them and have the formalization of the members before we take a vote on the committee formation?
I would think so, yes, because because we want the committee also to spend some time talking, defining exactly what we want the charter to be.
But their actions will be.
Yeah, exactly. So if that's, I with Liz and Jerry, okay, great. I don't see it. Okay, great. And I think if other people want to come forward subsequently, then we can also consider them. But these five people have all shown a strong interest in it.
So we'll move then to new business, and you have here, consider formation of a committee to study future uses of Buick.
Okay, so the the third, I was calling the panels when we began this process back in in March, but the third group that I felt that we probably should put to work between now and town meeting is a committee to actually look at what we would do with Buick if the police were not there. Because part of any presentation that we will be asked to make to the town meeting on a possible site and bonding for a site for the police station and so on, would obviously raise the question, well, what are you going to do with Buick? In fact, the Building and Facilities Committee has asked that question a number of times along the way. So I thought we could form a small group of citizens who are interested in this topic and see if, in fact, we can come up with a plan. I think we've been criticized as a board for not having a plan for Buick. And I think this is a good way to to deal with that issue. And so I would only suggest tonight that we agree this is what we want to do and give us a chance again to see who might want to come forward to participate in this and to give each of us a chance to scope out a bit more what we exactly think this committee ought to do.
Okay. Janet?
Yeah, I I agree with Bill, and I would be happy to be part of that committee because I have, over the years, expressed interest in using Buick for other other things rather than the police department. So I definitely want to be part of that.
I'd like to suggest that one of the individuals we speak to would be Rip Cross, since he was involved with a lot of the work relative to Buick as a potential candidate for that committee. I think that would be a good idea. The other thing that I would suggest is that we consider anyone who might occupy Buick. We wouldn't rule out someone that might bring in revenue, similar to what we had once with the courts, that it's not just to be an extension of town government or any other kind of activity. Okay. Bob? One second.
I I would like to be a part of that committee as well, and if there's an application process, if I could be informed. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going to move forward with that process. Next move to the Town Administrator Report.
I don't have much. You heard tonight a lot of what I've been working on lately, roads, roads, and roads. I, one question I do have is, do we want to move back to Whipple for our next meeting? I understand from the town clerk and the Planning and Zoning Administrator, who went up to Whipple to test out the system that it is working. And I think Janet might speak to how the first planning board went.
It went great. It was, we could hear, we could see the plans that were being presented to us. It really, it's, it's a good system.
So would we like to?
Yeah.
End July there, or, I mean, there's no way you see, and this is comfortable.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I'm liking it.
I was only going to say that we did have a Housing Commission meeting.
I was only going to say that we did have a Housing Commission meeting there. And I know Peter has left and I wouldn't want to speak about him in his absence, but he was turning quite right across the table from me. It was quite warm in that room the night that we met. So I'm just wondering if we might want to wait more towards the end of August or September before we move. If there's no pressure to move out of here.
Well, I'm sure they'd probably let us. They thought that we'd be out by July, but we could ask them.
Okay.
I mean, they're not using it, but.
I would just suggest if we could run through the end of August, that's just my recommendation.
If, if we could establish Labor Day as such a turning point?
That's fine. Cause I won't turn my key in. I was going to drop it off tomorrow. Okay.
Okay, so Kim. More trial runs with the planning board first.
Yeah. So Kim, if you could, and the Housing Commission.
So our first meeting will be September something.
Whatever it is. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have. Municipal Matters was out. So I think everybody saw that. And we'll play up the, continue to push the speeding issue, which was our earlier obey the sign. What was it? Obey the sign or pay the fine? So we'll keep it up in Municipal Matters. That's all I have.
Great. Okay. Committee meetings and reports. We did have a Housing Commission meeting and the focus of this meeting was to talk about conducting another presentation type to the community that would this time engage a group of developers to come and do presentations on what they've done for workforce housing in different types of communities, both nonprofit developers as well as a for-profit developer. And that was pretty much the focus of that meeting. Janet?
Okay. The planning board met and we had tree cutting as always, stormwater and erosion control matter. And we had an amendment to a previously approved subdivision. And then we gave final improvement to a small subdivision. And the last two were near Little Sunapee Lake.
Okay. And Bill, there's been no meeting of the Budget Committee, correct?
No, they are beginning to form small subgroups to go visit different departments and so on. And I'm sure we'll hear more about that as the season begins.
Okay. Then we have the scheduling of upcoming meetings and special events. Any other business other than approving a vouchers or permits? You're right. We need to approve the minutes of June 9th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a couple of changes to make.
Okay. Do you want to?
On page, I'm sorry, didn't get to this sooner, Kim, but on page two, two thirds of the way down the page, the paragraph that begins Renate Kandler.
With what? Could you, could you restate that?
On second page, page two, two thirds of the way down, the paragraph that begins with Ms. Kamler's name. There's the, the second sentence says, the report came from the state in 2018. I think she acknowledged afterwards, and the rest of that paragraph does, that she just hadn't read the back. She had read the wrong page. So I don't think that needs to be part of the permanent record that people are wondering how the state got involved. So if we could just take that sentence out, I think that would, because that was clarified in the course of the meeting. And then the other thing is on page five, about halfway down the page, there's a paragraph that just sort of goes into oblivion. Sharon Rollins suggested that improvements to Whipple, Whipple 2. So I think it must be just a sentence that was dropped out there. That's all.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the proposed changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are accepted. Now we go to, is there any other business?
Yes. I, once again, would like to move that we go to non-public session under RSA 91- A colon 3 comma to, to number, to, to some parentheses D and parentheses, for the purpose of buying, selling or leasing real property.
Hey, is there a second?
Second.
Take a roll call, Bill?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Nancy, yes? Okay, we'll go into non-public. Thank you.